Member of parliament for Mangango and I'm a member on this committee, thank you.
Honorable Fumfumwe.
Good afternoon, my person and good afternoon Honorable. A permanent witness. Um, she will you indicate. My name is Yotkamondo, I'm a member of parliament.
Me Tete. Very much, uh. Afternoon, Honorable. You could do. Chair, we have two acting act. One to know why. That substantive. No. You went. You're saying. What about the. Is the. The substantive. Oh. Good afternoon, Siwuyenge and welcome. I am Honorable Manza, Member of Parliament. Page the CS with. Thank you. Submit to the report, Chair. On page if five of the many reports. Of the council. If you read it, it says a review of. She will. Then there's the graph there. To page seven. Seventeen under appendixes. There is a ledger there. The stage appropriate. With your permission. Start. Expansion. Two, where our management response. The. I. His dedication and consistent in pursuing his efforts. favorable performance. Two, on fees and charges. Chair. They had negative variance of. Thousand nine hundred. The negative variance was due to a court injunction on land sales. The action taken. The 2024 budget was adjusted downwards to accommodate the anticipated lower performance on administration charges. Number three, on the answer says we had a negative variance of twenty thousand two hundred and eighty quacha. Action cause of query, the negative variance was due to the low demand in legal answers. Action taken, the 2024 budget for legal answers was adjusted downwards to accommodate unexpected law performance. On levies. We had negative variance of fourteen thousand. Eight hundred and fifteen quacha. The negative variance was due to a law movement of charcoal in the district. Action taken, the 2024 budget for the charcoal levy was adjusted downwards to accommodate the anticipated low performance as a result of the ban on charcoal production. Number five, on permits, we had favorable performance of fifty eight thousand nine hundred and seven quacha. The favorable variance was due to. Was due to high. Demand for health and fire payments in the district, resulting from an increase in business activities and an effective revenue task force. Action taken, the 2024 budget for permits was adjusted accordingly to accommodate the anticipated favorable performance. Other receipts, we had favorable correction of, we had favorable variance of thirty five thousand six hundred and fifty quacha. The favorable variance was due to funds stemming from an insurance claim, direction. The election commission of Zambia funding and rural and rural water projects funding. Action taken, the 2024 budget for other receipts was adjusted upwards to accommodate the anticipated favorable performance. Seven local government equalization fund, we had negative. Variance of hundred ninety five thousand four hundred and eighty one quacha. The negative variance was due to funds withheld from source by the Ministry of Local Government and Rural Development made for servicing of Lassif and union dues. The action taken, the Ministry of Local Government and Rural Development has received all amounts deducted from source. Eight other grants, we had six thousand. Two hundred and twenty seven, which was favorable. The favorable variance was due to surplus funding by the Ministry of Local Government and Rural Development in order that, in order to ensure the local authorities financial demands in regard to preparation of integrated development plan were met. Action taken, the local authorities has since completed. That word should read since. The local authorities since completed the formulation of the integrated development plan. Remedy measure, the local authority will continue supporting its revenue task force and sensitizing taxpayers. Chair, all the appendixes supporting this, they are on appendix one. In addition, chair, operational funds amounting to one million nine hundred and eighty five thousand three hundred and seventeen quacha were budgeted, were brought forward from the previous year, bringing the total funds available to nineteen million ninety five thousand nine hundred and ninety eight quacha. As at December thirty first, twenty twenty three, operational funds in amounts totaling seventeen million six hundred and forty one thousand seven hundred and twenty one quacha had been spent, leaving a balance of one million four hundred and fifty four thousand two seventy seven quacha. Management response, cause of query. Management acknowledges the auditor's findings and wishes to state that this was due to local government equalization fund amounting to seven hundred and fifty eight thousand six hundred and ten quacha, which was received on twenty ninth December twenty twenty three. Four hundred and twenty nine thousand four hundred and fourteen quacha of the local generated funds held in the account for personal emoluments. Two hundred and forty two thousand four seventy three quacha held in the account for construction of market and. And twenty three thousand seven hundred and seventy nine quacha held in the account for rural water project. Action taken. The unspent amounts constituting seven fifty eight thousand six hundred and ten quacha in local game equalization fund, four hundred and twenty nine thousand four hundred and fourteen quacha in local generated funds, two hundred and forty two thousand four seventy three in committed funds for construction of the market and twenty three thousand seven hundred and seventy nine quacha in committed funds for rural water project have since been spent. Remedy measure, the authority, the local authority will continue adhering to the set laws and regulations in expanding public funds and ensure that funds are expended within the financial year. All supporting documents are on appendix two, chair. Chair number. B, which is annual performance of the council. Uh, page five and page six, chair. This is a repeat. The repeat, chair. We can. We can go to page seven. Thank you, chair. We come on deliverable targets, outputs not achieved. Management response. Number of area plans approved. Management acknowledges the auditor's findings and wishes to state that this was due to a cancellation of the initial land acquisition agreement resulted from an internal land dispute. This entailed that the local authority could not plan the pass of land. Action taken, chair, the local authorities since recovered a total of three hundred thousand in refunds stemming from the cancellation of the agreement. Remedy measures for all upcoming land purchase, a comprehensive due diligence procedures shall be carried out. Number of plots demarcated, cause of query, management acknowledges the auditor's findings and wishes to state that this was due to a cancellation of land, of the initial land acquisition agreement which resulted from an internal land dispute, this entailed that the the local authority could not demarcate the pass of land. Action taken, the local authority has since recovered a total of three hundred thousand in refunds stemming from the cancellation of this agreement. Remedy measures for all upcoming land purchase, a comprehensive due diligence procedure shall be carried out. Number of environmental programs conducted, cause of query. Management acknowledges the auditor's findings and wishes to state that this was due to inadequate funds to finance the environmental sensitization programs in the district. Action taken, the local authority has since adequately budgeted for its environmental programs. Remedy measures, the local authority will continue to adequately budget for its environmental programs. Number of gravy ads prepared, cause of query. Management acknowledges the auditor's findings and wishes to state that this was due to an availability of the land meant for the graveyard. Action taken, the local authority has since continued engaging members of the community in finding suitable land for establishing a graveyard. Remedy measures, the community is currently utilizing the custom graveyard in the district as an alternative. Chair, all the supporting documents, they are on in appendix three. Part C, compliance with registration and regulation with management of fire services, lack of fire equipment, management response and cause of query. Management acknowledges the auditor's findings and wishes to state that the local authority did not have a fire station and fire tender in place during the year under review, this was due to inadequate funds. Action taken, the local authority has since budgeted for the acquisition of land for the construction of the fire station. Remedy measure, the local authority is currently utilizing the water bouser as an alternative in firefighting services. Chair, all supporting documents pertaining to the above on their own appendix four. Cross cutting issues, chair, we have got appendix one audit opinion, Siwuyenge Council for twenty twenty two had an qualified opinion, twenty twenty three also an qualified opinion. Appendix. Appendix two, budget funding and expenditure, chair. Chair, this part is similar with your permission, chair. Is similar to. What I read on the other page with your permission, if you're allowed to come to appendix twenty there, chair. Yes, you are permitted. Thank you, chair. On this appendix, twenty failure to secure property with title deeds. Shewenj Town Council, number of properties without title deeds two. Cause of query. Management acknowledges the auditor's findings and wishes to state that the failure to secure title deeds for the two properties was due to delays by the Ministry of Lands and Natural Resources in processing land applications. Action taken, the local authority has since managed to submit all necessary requirements accorded, accorded in circular number. MLGRD seventy one slash seventy, twenty seven slash seven, date thirteenth December twenty twenty four. Remedy measure, the local authority will see to it that all its acquired properties have title deeds obtained within the allotted timeframe. Append. Before you go to appendic, the the next item, appendix twenty. Twenty three, would like to recognize the presence of one of our members of the committee. I would like to ask her to introduce herself, Honorable, you can introduce yourself.
Thank you, chair, good afternoon, good afternoon, Siwuyenge, my name is Kampamamlanga. I'm a member of parliament for the good people of Kalulushi on the copper belt, Siwuyenge, you are most welcome.
Thank you, Honorable, then you can continue, yes? Thank you. We have appendix twenty three, poor management of waste, failure to establish the disposal site. Cause of query, management acknowledges the auditor's findings and wishes to state that the failure to establish a disposal site was due to an availability of suitable land. Action taken, the local authority has since managed to secure land for establishing the disposal site. Remedy measure, the local authority intends to procure more land to expand its waste management disposal site, appendix four and six. Appendix twenty eight, failure to settle statutory and other obligations. Shewenj Town Council has outstanding territorial obligation amounting to six million six hundred and ninety six thousand nine hundred and forty one quacha. Cause of query. Management acknowledges the auditor's findings and wishes to state that the failure to settle outstanding territorial obligations was due to inadequate funds. Action taken, a total of two million six hundred and ninety thousand seven hundred and eleven quacha has since been settled, leaving a balance of four million six thousand two hundred and thirty towards the liquidation of outstanding territorial obligation. The local authority has further planned to liquidate the outstanding obligations in the twenty twenty five budget as follows. Napsa, three hundred and thirty one thousand twenty eight quacha, ZRA, three hundred and thirty one quacha, twenty eight quacha. Then the Napsa, we have got, at the time of auditing, we had three million six hundred and sixteen thousand four seventy one quacha. Amount paid slash waiver coming to six, two million six hundred and ninety thousand seven hundred and eleven quacha. Balance nine hundred and twenty five thousand seven hundred and sixty. ZRA, three million eighty thousand four hundred and seventy quacha, paid slash waiver nothing. Balance three million eighty thousand four hundred and seventy quacha. Remedy measure, management will ensure that all territorial obligations are settled on time are therefore due and adequately budget for the liquidation of all outstanding obligations. Appendix four and seven support the submissions. Chair, that ends my report, the rest attachments, appendices. Thank you very much, Council Secretary, for that wonderful presentation. It's now time for points of clarification. Honorable members, uh, we are free to ask questions or clarifications. Honorable Member for Mangango.
Thank you so much, chair, I'd like to take the CS to page eleven. Budget, funding and expenditure.
Let's go to page eleven.
Chair, I think before we just labor too much on this one. I just would like to ask the CS on unspent funds, one million four hundred and fifty four thousand two hundred and seventy seven quach. Can you just explain how you used these funds because I'm trying to adapt these figures to me, they are not adding up. Can you just explain how you use these funds and the evidence of the expenditure, I've gone to your appendix there. I've seen what is there, just try to explain clearly, I submit.
Yes, Council Secretary, you can respond to that.
Thank you, chair, um, perhaps we. Thank you, chair, perhaps we can go to. We, we, we go to, we, we go to page seventeen.
Appendix two.
Yes, appendix two, which is part of the appendixes, page seventeen, chair. Chair, we reported that we had the local gaming equalization fund that was brought forward. Seven hundred and fifty eight thousand, that is on page seventeen. I hope the Honorable Member for Mangango is on that page. We have.
Okay, speak through the chair and direct to the chair.
Thank you, chair. Seven hundred and fifty eight thousand six hundred and ten quacha twenty four ngwe. Then we have also unspent funds, which is local generated four twenty nine, four seventy, uh, four hundred and twenty nine thousand four hundred and fourteen quacha forty ngwe. And, uh. When we add the two, what we are getting is one million one hundred and eighty eight thousand twenty four quacha sixty four ngwe. Then we made the following payments, chair, sixteen thousand quacha. Eight hundred and five quacha, sixteen thousand eight hundred and five quacha. This, there is a voucher on page eighteen, part of, um, appendixes. This money went for. This money went, we were paying for the subscription, for the DAV, the pillow that we are using. So there is sixteen thousand there, eight hundred and five, that is on page nineteen. Page nineteen, chair, is a proof of payment. And allow me, member, to this point, chair, since we have submitted the. We have submitted an addendum, there are also some receipts. On the addendum, chair. On the addendum chair, there is just the first page there, there is a memo and then there is also local purchase order, there is also an invoice. We, we have two invoices, one sixty thousand eight zero five, eight ngwe. Then the other invoice is ten thousand, so the two invoices added together, chair, they are coming to sixteen thousand. And then on the other next page on the addendum is a receipt for ten thousand, another receipt for sixty thousand eight zero five eight ngwe. Then from there we move to the other payment, which is six hundred and forty thousand three four, three forty two quacha, forty six, forty six ngwe, chair. In the many reports, chair, there is the payment voucher there. Then we allow me to take you again to addendum, which is.
Then we, allow me to take you again to addendum, which is I may use the...
Honorable member.
Thank you so much, Chair. It's not that I meant to disrupt the CS, but I just wanted him to try to go through what is presented, whether he is able to understand what. You go on page nineteen.
Page nineteen?
Yes. When did you make that payment? This is on eighth February twenty twenty-five.
Page nineteen?
Nineteen. Don't worry, wait first, I'm guiding you.
CS, you want to speak on the ninety?
Page nineteen?
I said, wait, the Chair will ask you to speak. I'm still asking a question. I'm still guiding you where the questions are, who emanate from. Go to page nineteen, Chair, through you. The payment was done on the eighth of February twenty twenty-five, from twenty twenty-three. You go Chair, or CS, you go to page 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 twenty, page forty.
Let's go to page forty?
Yes. Okay, that payment or the remittance was made on the eighth of February, also twenty twenty-five. The question therefore, Chair, is why was this money still being kept? That's just an illustration of on this expenditure, Chair, for the money for twenty twenty-three. But it has been spent now in twenty twenty-five. Why are the payments being done in twenty twenty-five? Instead of the money working for the people in twenty twenty-three, firstly. Secondly, when you sum up, Chair, all these payment vouchers, they are not summing up. They are not summing up to the one point four, neither to the uh, one, let me see my calculation.
One.
Yes, neither to the one million twenty-four thousand eight hundred and sixty-three kwacha. They are not, Chair. Can you just explain on those two queries? I submit, Chair.
Council Secretary, you are free to, 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 to ask your colleagues to assist you. You have the Director of Finance there, and any other officer you have come with can help you.
The, the payment was in February twenty twenty-five. Eight twenty-three. I think the clarification to make, Chair, is that when we were preparing documents for evidence, we had to go in the system to start printing some of the evidences. Now, the system, when you print, it will give you the current date. I think this is the scenario on, on page forty. Doesn't mean the payment was made on on eighth February twenty twenty-five. I think that is the clarification. Then coming to the issue...
Before you, before you proceed, we want to hear from Minister of Lugamend.
Thank you Chair for your indulgence, just to help the witness before you. Uh, yes, you printed from the system, but I think what is key, if you interrogate your document, the value date when the payment was done actually is twenty twenty-four. So your stamping was to affirm your documentations. I think that's what we, we are reviewing. Yeah, so I, I thought we could do, give that context, Chair. Thank you.
Okay. Now, we just wanted also to, just a follow-up. Well, in terms of source documents for any payment, you start with the memo, isn't it? The memo in, on the, on the addendum is dated twenty-seventh October twenty twenty-three for DAV. Isn't it? You go to the addendum. It's twenty-seventh October. Then the next source document from the memo is what? LPO, the local purchase order. From October, November, December, the LPO was done on the tenth January twenty twenty-four. Are we together?
Yes.
Then the other document is the actual payment for six thousand was done when November twenty twenty-three. Which comes first, LPO or the payment? That's, this is a pro forma invoice? Then from DAV, what you received is LPO? It was a pro forma invoice? So how do you reconcile the debts there?
To start with computing services dated November twenty twenty-three. This indicates that, Chair, we had almost kept the invoice for the month of November and December without paying. The actual payment was done in January and I think the local purchase order was done in January. Maybe that is the explanation I can give.
The, the honorable member for Mangango asked you as to why, I think it has been explained, why January? I believe that if this money is being accounted in February twenty twenty-five, if that is the case, but you have explained that it's because of printing. Don't you think that you are going also to have payments and spent monies accruing to twenty twenty-four or twenty twenty-five? That was going to be my question. Now that has been explained. Let me ask you, the member for for Mitete to ask a question.
Good Chair, thank you so very much. And the good thing is, we are dealing with an accountant. That's the good thing. But page eleven, which projects were you to do? Action taken.
Page eleven?
Yes. Yes. All right, to cut the long story short, we've seen the market. Where is the money committed for rural water project? Rural water project has since been spent. So where is this rural water project? Or what is it? Or where is it? Market we've seen.
Council Secretary, the money that you, you had set aside for rural water project?
Has since been?
Spent. How was it spent?
Where is this rural water, what is this rural water project, where is this rural water project? At least the market we have seen.
Thank you, Honorable Member.
Thank you Chair. Allow me to to take you to page forty-seven, Chair.
Okay.
Let's go to page forty-seven. Yes, we have, is it a ledger or? Yes, Chair, we have got to the ledger there. Which show that the money brought forward, twenty-three thousand, seven hundred and seventy-nine thousand and four where. At the time of making payment, we paid twenty-six thousand, which seemed not to be possible. But why it was possible, Chair, that we had the other monies in the account? Among the documents that we have submitted, Chair, on the addendum, because in the many reports, I think there is just a voucher with no attachment. So in the addendum, I think you'll be able to see even where they were signing in.
Yes, because of somewhere other. So we want the evidence. Yes. Also repeat, the market shelter we have seen. What is this rural water project? Where is it?
Actually, in their, in their submission, they have explained that these were like allowances to training. It was to do with training. So he has referred us to an addendum, that's what I was asking. CS refers directly so that the honorable members can appreciate what you're talking about. Then as you refer to the addendum, that explains the twenty-three or twenty-six thousand. Yes, we want to see that. Besides that, we also want to you, to take your time, maybe the DF, to give us a reconciliation on page eleven, unspent money one point four. On the appendix two, is it page whatever, it is one point one. What's the difference? Where is it? What, where is the four hundred?
Thank you Chair. To to answer the question on twenty-six thousand, let me request to the members to come with me on page, on the addendum, since it is paged.
Yes.
Page forty of the addendum, let's go to page forty. So page forty, the report lines through forty-one, forty-two, forty, forty-three. Then we've got the photocopies of the signature there. So the, the main emphasis on page forty-three, where the ledger is.
Yes, Chair, we have seen the twenty-six. It has moved from twenty-three, now twenty-six.
Yes.
So where has the extra money come from?
Chair, this rural water account had some money in that account. So at the time when, you know, these are monies brought forward. So at the time when we...
CS, CS.
Speak through the chair.
CS, this money was unspent. So if the money was also in the account, why was it not captured at that time? Why was twenty-three as the only money captured? Not twenty-six? Because the money was in, it was not coming from somewhere. It was already there in the account. So why was it not captured at that time?
Before you respond, to simplify. Unspent money, twenty-three thousand was coming from unspent money. Now you're saying that this rural water account had some money. This rural water account, was it one of the accounts that was captured as keeping unspent money or not? That is the first clarification. If it was one of them, that was captured as keeping some extra monies which were not spent, where has the three thousand come from? That's his question and concern. If not, explain before a follow-up. Because we want to follow this matter. Let's start with honorable.
Yes, Chair, thank you.
First, hold on.
Okay.
Let's start from the question for honorable member for Mitete. Respond.
Chair, you have hundred percent observed that we had twenty-three thousand brought forward. Now, at the time of making payment, we had twenty-six. So where is the other money coming from? Chair, during the year, because if you check when we paid the, when we made the payment, it was in the following year, we had received some money in the same account. So this made it very possible to pay twenty-six thousand. Chair, you rest my case.
As you rest, honorable members are not satisfied. So you can't rest until you clear this matter.
Chair, Chair, thank you very much.
From honorable Mitete, we shall go to
in the due course, you received some money. From where? And where is that evidence? We, we have no problems. Very good. Continue receiving money and spending it. That's the way to go. So you received it from where?
Honorable for Mangango. Thank you so much, Chair. Chair. He's saying, is your mind full? At first, Chair, he said there was some other money in the other account. Secondly, the CS is saying, we received some other money. So I think those two statements are like contradicting themselves. Maybe let me start by asking to say, in that wash, is it a wash?
Dewash, is it dewash? It's still called dewash, eh?
Yes, the dewash account. How much was there during the time of audit, firstly? And secondly, how much did you receive that from that account, which already had the money? And there was again another money that came on. How much? They said that you just was able to get a two thousand from there. How much was there before the time of audit? And how much was received? That you are saying you received another money, because those are your words, I submit, Chair.
I like the way you have concluded before audit. Honorable members, and I think it should be the interest of the Minister of Lugamend and all the stakeholders, auditors, this question, the council is confusing themselves. From what honorable man stated, twenty-three, it comes to twenty-six. How do we make a trail? You know what is happening, honorable members? If you look at the evidence that the councils are producing, Shewa Yungitown being one of them, some of the payments are made in twenty twenty-five. The year under review that we are scrutinizing is twenty twenty-three. But you note that they have failed to use one point four million in twenty twenty-three, which was audited in twenty twenty-four. As they go to twenty twenty-four, that, there is a high possibility that that money was misused. Used in other expenses not explained. Then they get the money that they received in twenty twenty-four to explain for twenty twenty-three. No wonder you see payment vouchers or other payments in twenty twenty-five. And one of the members asked, why do we have such things? There is that possibility. That is why now they are telling this committee and the nation that, no, actually what was a there was twenty-two, twenty-three thousand. But when they wanted to spend on the same program, they spent twenty-six thousand. Now, the interest of this committee is, we'd like to know how much you received in twenty twenty-four, which may be outside our mandate. Because we are looking at it, but we'd like to know where you go that money. And you have not explained, Council Secretary and your team, how, what was outstanding in twenty twenty-three was one point four. But according to your report, you are only explaining to one point one. Where is the four hundred plus? This is the money that you should be telling this committee. If you got some extra money, it should have come from the four hundred. You get my point. I thought I should put it very clear. And we would like to see that evidence. If you got from the same four hundred, you should explain the detail of how the four hundred was spent for twenty twenty-three. You can shed light on it.
Thank you Chair. Answering the question, how might... Thank you, Chair. Answering the question, how much did we have at the close of the year in rural water account? The money that was reported and which was there is twenty-three thousand seven hundred and seventy-nine thousand. Then, on the question, how much did we receive? I think that one I will reserve it for the Director of Finance. But then allow me to answer the question, where did the other money? Chair, the queries, there is a report which is talking about the market. Because on this other ledger, on the, that ledger that we showed one point one, that does not include that money which is sitting on the market. So it is reported separately. So when you add the rural water, you add the money for the market, you add the money for the salaries, it will come to that same amount.
One point four.
Yes, one point four.
Help us with the figures. Doc, let me ask Dr. Manza to contribute. Doc, switch off your mic.
Thank you so much, Chair. Mine is almost, is on the same anyway, of course, about unspent funds, which is on page four. I will briefly just summarize it like, there are a lot of financial irregularities that we have discovered in your payment system. So, on page four, talking about the same one million four hundred and seventy-eight thousand. Yes, it is broken down on page four. To say seven hundred and fifty-eight was from LGEF. Four twenty-six was locally generated resources. And the two forty-two, four seventy-three was from, was for the account for construction of the market. And twenty-three thousand seven hundred and seventy-nine was for rural water supply projects. I just sampled the accounts for cost market, market shelter. Chair, the addendum, the contract for the market shelter, of which the pictures are in this newly circulated addendum, is, they've given a contract here. It is three hundred and forty-one thousand, three hundred and forty-one thousand and ten quacha. A construction period of three months. And the construction was supposed to end twenty-three January twenty-twenty-four. In the same, before you leave this contract, let's check this completion certificate of the market. Completion certificate of the market, are you there on the completion certificate on this newly circulated addendum?
Only addendum number?
Number, this, number two, the newly-
Twenty, page twenty-five? Okay.
Yes, page twenty-five. Page twenty-five is the completion certificate. The amount is three hundred and sixty-one thousand and fifteen quacha. Different from what was signed for in the contract. The contract is just before this completion certificate. So we need an explanation as to why the contractor at the completion certificate is stating a different amount, one hundred and eighteen thousand quacha above what was signed for. And also, the, the, this completion certificate was issued on seventeenth of June twenty-twenty-four. That was five months after the completion period of the project. Now imagine, at contract signing, you signed for three hundred and forty-one. The contract delayed. A completion certificate was issued five months later, but at a higher cost, one hundred and eighteen above what you, what you signed for. We are even expecting that you'd get some money because the contractor delayed. So that explanation is needed as to what is the actual contract price that, then we go to financial irregularities now.
No, before you leave that page, I just wanted to take interest, Council Secretary, on the completion certificate. Or certificate of partial completion. On page twenty-five, just to look at the same certificate and test the authenticity. There are two date stamps there. Abramuliamba, you're the Director, Engineering? Do we have him?
Yes, yes.
Yes, Chair.
You signed, I'm talking to Abramuliamba. Your mic should go off, CS. And you signed Abramuliamba, you signed the same certificate for June twenty-twenty-four, you signed in twenty-twenty-five, isn't it? Twelfth February twenty-twenty-five, that's your date stamp, isn't it? Then, Ivasi Mushiruwe, Ivasi Mushiba, you have signed as the Council Secretary. Were you the Council Secretary in August twenty-one, twenty-twenty-four? Director, date stamp, twenty-twenty-five, February twelve. The Council Secretary signed in August twenty-twenty-four, only twenty-first August twenty-twenty-four. The completion certificate dated seventeenth June twenty-twenty-four. Now, when I was going through, I wanted to test, or we test these evidences that you're giving us. Why do this certificate for twenty-twenty-four, it was given out to the contractor, that this is what you have done. But only signed the other one in twenty-twenty-five, twelfth February, which is last week. Then the other one signs, Ivasi Mushira is the Council Secretary in August twenty-twenty-four. How do you reconcile these dates?
Chair, maybe I can clarify on the date stamp for twelfth February twenty-twenty-five. I think when we are submitting this, we wanted to put the current date. That current date that we put just to show that, yes.
Okay.
It is, it has nothing to do with the, yes, certificate. It was just to show that actually-
So Liamba, you were there in twenty-twenty-four, in twenty-twenty-four?
Yes, Chair, I was there.
You are the Director. Mushira was the Council Secretary in twenty-twenty-four, August.
Chair, at the time I was Director of Finance, I'm sure I could have signed this document. Because-
Okay, that's fine. You see, you must be careful.
Yes.
You should not be submitting documents for the purpose of just answering. You have seen the questions from Dr. Manza. A contract, you say there was four hundred something for the market, delayed completion. The actual contract was three hundred and sixty-one. And that's what you signed for. And you did this in, in what, in, in, in June seventeenth, June twenty-twenty-four? You only signed this certificate in August, if you were assigning for Council Secretary. But I know you have said you were not the Council Secretary. And when you are not the Council Secretary, what did you do? Did you do that? Your mic, when you're answering. Did you do that?
I've seen that, an omission, Chair.
No, did you do that? Yes or no?
No.
Why?
It was an omission, Chair.
Are you sure?
Yes, Chair.
And you are acting Council Secretary?
Yes, Chair.
Okay. Dr. Manza?
Yes, Chair, they haven't explained the, they say, what is the contract price? And why it has inflated from what was signed is three hundred and forty-one thousand quacha?
To three sixty-one.
To three sixty-one.
Director Engineering, Director Finance, we get your voices.
Thank you, Chair.
Simple questions.
Thank you, Chair. The Honorable Member of Parliament, the doctor, has rightly observed. Explanation is that we had a variation of twenty thousand. If you add that twenty thousand-
Where is it? Take us to the variation.
I don't think we submitted as evidence, but the variation was there.
How do we believe the story, my brother? This is a very serious committee. We are not here for stories.
Chair, I can, if you just sample your payment certificate, your IPCs, which are in your addendum here. All the, there are three-
Switch off your mic, Director.
There are three IPCs. That addendum, talking about a variant, is not on these IPCs, which you are bringing now. You did not admit the correspondence? What was the variation all about? Even the payment certificates, the IPCs? Because any time when there's a change in the cost, price of the details, the IPCs are very, very, very clear to say, any variation, when and so on, how much? So where is that variation order?
Chair, with your indulgence, to, for progress sake, are you able to produce the variation order? Which you indicated to say it's there. Given a minute, two hours today, are you able to? Chair, thank you so much.
Thank you, Honorable Council Secretary. You can come in.
Okay, thank you. Maybe we can go to the addendum, page thirty-nine. There you find IPC, page thirty-nine, yes. So we, if you check on the top right corner, where you have the contract details summarized, you will see that we have a contract price there, three forty-one. Then just below that, we have a revised contract sum resulting from the variation that I referred to.
Yes, I have seen it, only on one IPC.
You all speak through the chair. Yes, Doc, you can now.
Yes, it's only through, only one IPC. But the rest of the IPCs, one, two, three, there is no that detail. Even, even you, so this was just done at the last IPC to put that, to put that variation. We want to see that variation order. And we want to see the BOQ for this market. So that we check where the variation order has come from in terms of the change of scope of work. Okay, appendix number two, the payments on the same market. Appendix number two, you have made the four payments. Let's go to appendix two. There's a ledger. And then you have payment vouchers. Payment voucher, the first one is about dev dev computing, and then salaries. But I talk about the, the ledger for market, market.
As we wind up?
Yes. So, one, three payment just, is it? Okay, appendix number two, just towards the end of appendix number two, you have got payment vouchers for the market, market shelter. The first payment, I think I want all of us to be there, so that this- Uh, page four, thirty, page thirty-nine.
Of the main report?
Yes.
Yes, we are there.
On appendix two, page thirty-nine.
A voucher?
Yes. This is a payment towards the market, whose picture is on this newly submitted addendum. Eighty-five thousand two hundred and fifty-two. This payment has a comment, has a note, that this was wrongly done, wrongly paid from CDF account. Hence, to, hence the refund, page thirty-eight. Okay. So at what stage did you realize that you used the wrong account? The contractor, when all the principal officers signed this, signed of this, this payment. And also, it is not even acquitted. All the payment vouchers are not acquitted. Then, the next issue on, on these payments, the last payment on, which is sixty-one thousand eight fifty-one. It is page, under this market, yeah, it's page forty-five.
Summarize.
Page forty-five. This sixty-one thousand nine hundred is paid from salary account. Salary account, not capital account. It is paid from salary account. And yet, it is not refunded as per the norm which you set by yourselves. You made a mistake using the CDF account. Paid the contractor. Then internally, you transferred money from capital account to pay back to the CDF account. Then at a certain stage, you went to a salary account to pay contractor on the capital account. But there's no refund for this. Why didn't you, why don't you respect your own norms that you set in your account standards? Thank you.
You can respond to that?
Thank you, Chair. The first question was, at what point did we realize we had made a mistake? Chair, I think it only took five days, but we noticed that, you know, that payment was done in a wrong account. And thereafter, we had to do what was right.
Council Secretary, is it true, the entire management system-
Yes.
From the originator, who aided by the treasurer to say, where are the funds? You know, this is a CDF account. Or if you have a capital account, do you- This is a capital account. One originates a payment and audited. Buana auditor. You didn't realize that this is a CDF account, that you are paying money. And approval, money released, then you say we realized that this was paid from a wrong account. Is that true, Buana acting Council Secretary?
Yes, Chair. What- The documentation pertaining to the voucher, it was done from CDF account.
And did you check?
It was done from a capital account. Even the memo, everything, it was indicated that when the officer was doing the transfer in the system, internet banking, he wrongly placed it on CDF account. So as we, because we, we are online, so when I noticed that this payment has been done from wrong account, I quickly said, can we reimburse before? I quickly said, can we reimburse before we, we have found wanting? So actually, it was personally myself, because when I was checking, going through the statements.
Is the CDF money safe? I always ask this question.
Chair, we must assure you that CDF is hundred percent safe.
It is not hundred percent, because what you are doing is, is scary. You can't tell me that the council, no, apart from five days later, you realize the money was... What did you do to the officer who transferred the money? Who did the transfers?
I cautioned him, where is the evidence?
Verbal caution?
Yes, yes, Chair, it was verbal cautioning, that next time such a thing should not happen.
As we wind up, eh, I thought I should mention that. You have not answered all the questions. You have not satisfied this committee on the management of projects, on the management of resources. And we have learned that CDF money was used for other projects which were not CDF related. This is why we ask such question, and people, they, 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 they are following us to say, money under the council, you as our officers, safe. You can do anything, then to say, no, we apologize, we caution someone. That is not satisfactory. You should not forget that you are put in those positions to do the correct thing. You are failing to account for projects here. And these tenders of councils now, you want to make payments in twenty-twenty-five, bring attachments. We are able to know. We shall make sure we follow, we shall stick to the twenty-twenty-three as the year under review, audited by the General's Office. Anything you bring as supporting documents relating to payments in twenty-twenty-five, you are commingling. Back of a better term, monies unspent for twenty-twenty-three and monies unspent for twenty... Some of the monies collected in twenty-twenty-four, you are using to account for the... So we shall follow it rigorously to ensure that we correct the situation in councils. The Zambian people are worried, the way management of resources is happening in the councils, and you can see for yourselves. So learn from this as you go back, start doing the correct things. If the report for twenty-four comes, God willing, these members are here. We shall follow up with you, we will, and some of you in person, to ensure that we make recommendations that you are not fit to be in those offices. Public resources should be utilized prudently. I hope I'm speaking to all of you. This is the concern from this committee. So stop that system of getting money for CDF, using for your operations, then say, we regret. We are not going to do, to use that as an excuse. These date stamps you are putting, when you are not the Council Secretary, you just stamp it, we are going to appear. We are aware, we know what you are doing. So you are not helping yourselves. Do the correct things, everything, IPCs. If you have any variations or whatever you call it, make sure it is recorded. You can't just come and say, no, no, we, we did a variation, there was a twenty thousand quacha. We don't take verbal stories. We could have phoned you, we could have told us by phone. But here we relying on what the auditors found. So without saying, I would like to stay caution you, to improve on your financial management of resources, to improve on your project management. Auditor, you are the gatekeeper. Why do you allow such things to pass? And when you are making a payment, you are, you even indicate the account on top. This is the payment salaries account. But you won't tell this committee, no, it was a mistake, five days we realized. That will not be entertained. So I would like to withdraw the immunity that was conferred on you as you go back your, on your own. Buen Acting Council Secretary, can you show this committee and the nation that you are worth it to be there? So that the Zambian people can say, yes, there's change. Director of Finance, participate, be on the lookout. Director Engineering is where they call. People want to see development, they want to see Shiwunji change. So you go back, wish you well. Please improve on what we have observed from this committee. Thank you very much, you can take leave.
Thank you, Chair, we shall improve.
You are tuned into Parliament Television. We would like to thank you for your viewership. So there you have it, that Shiwunji Town Council making an appearance before the committee on local government accounts. The committee is actually considering the reports of the Auditor General on the audit of the accounts of the local authorities for the financial year ended thirty-first December twenty-twenty-three. And the Shiwunji Town Council was being led by the acting Council Secretary, that's Mr. Evans Mushua. Was flanked by Directors of Engineering, Health, Planning, and of course Director, that's the Chief Accountant for Shiwunji Town Council. Earlier in the morning, we did have Ngawe Town Council making appearances before the Local Government Accounts, you know, Committee, and it was being led by Mr. Hamwene Mpende, who was the Council Secretary. Remember at fifteen-thirty, we will be joined by Campina Porshi Town Council. They will also be making an appearance before the Committee on Local Government Accounts. And that would be the last, eh, Town Council to make an appearance before the Committee on Local Government Accounts. And so, would like to thank you as always for having, you know, tuned in to watch, eh, what is happening regarding submissions made from different councils countrywide before the Committee on Local Government Accounts. On behalf of our sign language interpreters, that's Chola Kauma and Jerson Manda are not forgetting the studio and production. I'm Claude Exinda, as a Jungari member, at fourteen-thirty...